Good evening. I'd like to call it order the Wednesday, December 20th, regular meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In compliance with open meeting laws, we are right now recording and live broadcasting this meeting. As recording the meeting, please state your name and where you're from. Seeing none, and it's my understanding we have no one who is joining us remotely, so we'll be able to conduct business in-house here today. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. I'd also like to take a moment of silence for Staff Sergeant Jacob Gallagher. He was a Pittsfield native. His remains were brought back to Westover last Friday, and I believe they'll be laying him to rest tomorrow. Rest in peace, and thank you for your service. A true hero. We'll take a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. Rule call for attendance, please.
Mayor View.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Barcello.
Mr. Doubt.
Here.
Mrs. Perret.
Present.
Mrs. Schofield.
Here.
Mr. Shamsky.
Here.
Mr. Lamath.
Here.
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mrs. Lopes.
Present.
Mr. Zatella.
Yes.
Eleven present, one absent.
Thank you, Attorney Bouchard. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left with the Vice Chair of the School Committee. All set. Don Lamah?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge that we have two members here tonight. This is their last meeting. Mr. Tim Wagner, who's going to be moving into an at-large position on the Board of Aldermen, and Mr. Samuel Shamsky, who's moving into Ward Six as a City Councilor. Tim, you've got big shoes to fill. I'm sure you'll give it the best shot you can. And Sam, I'm sure you'll do fine in the ward seat that you're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace Schofield.
I just wanted to wish the community happy holidays and restful vacations.
Thank you, Sam Shamsky.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I truthfully spent the last few days thinking about what I was going to say tonight, and I thought about writing something, but I thought I would just say it from the heart. I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you for this wonderful experience. Thank you to the voters. Thank you to everyone who has helped me become a better leader, a better person, and all the knowledge that I've gained from this wonderful opportunity. It is not every day a 23-year-old can say that they got to pursue their dream of public service. So for that opportunity, I think everyone, again, John F. Kennedy once said that every achievement starts with the decision to try, and I think that we, in this past two years, have had a lot of achievements. And I didn't think getting into this, I would have served, or we would have have served with three superintendents. We would not have passed two of the largest budgets in Chicopee Public Schools' history and started the process for a new Anna Berry School. But we all did that together, and I'm proud of the work that we accomplished. Thank you all.
Thank you. Chet Zatella?
All set.
All set. We'll go to my right. Doug Gerard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take a minute and offer up my deepest condolences to the Burnham family. Those that knew Sean, he passed away yesterday, and he was a brother and a friend to many. So Sean, we're going to miss you. And I would just like to echo my committee member, Ms. Schofield, in her comments to wish everybody a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Perret.
Yes, as we approach the end of 2023, a happy holiday is extended to all. And a thank you is extended to the students, the parents, and everyone involved in the education process, the teachers, the peer professionals, the custodians, the crossing guards, the bus drivers, the administrative assistants, the administrators, the principals, the VPs, and all the special instructors for all the work that you do on behalf of the education of the children. Thank you as well to the Chicopee residents who share their observations of the school system through emails, letters, speaking out at Public Input, visiting my public office hours. You keep the public accountable. You keep the public servants accountable to education, so thank you. And Mr. Shamsky and Mr. Wagner, you are wished much success in your new roles as City Councilor. And as Mr. Lamath said, you have big shoes to fill with those of Mr. Jim Tilletson and Mr. Derek Dobass. And a welcome to Mr. Brooks, as he will be joining us, as well as Ms. Russo. So happy holidays to all.
Thank you. Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by wishing everybody a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas, and to say to our staff and our students, I hope you have a wonderful Christmas break, and thank you for all that you do for our students. I know it's a little bit of a chaotic time in the lead-up to the Christmas break, but it's always a fun one, and I hope you all enjoy the rest that comes after. I just have a few thank yous to say. First and foremost, to my colleagues on this board, all the tenured members for passing along all your knowledge and experience, and all the new members who I've gotten to serve with and who I will continue to serve with in different capacities. Good luck to you, Mr. Shamsky. Ms. Schofield, Ms. Bernard, Mr. Bernard, Mr. Doubt, you guys have come into this and you've taken the job exceptionally well. I have faith that you'll continue to serve the education system very, very well and dutifully. And to my dad, I want to say thank you for all the public policy knowledge that you've passed on to me, even though I don't always take your suggestions, do what you'd like with them. I always take them to heart. To my mother, who sat down with me as a finance official for the state, she sat down with me and she drew up a fake city budget of $100 million and spent, I think, about two hours explaining the budgeting process to me. So thank you for teaching me the professional side of city government. And thank you to my stepmother, Laureen, who is an educator in the Chicopee Public Schools, for always giving me the teacher perspective when I've needed it. It's been extremely helpful in navigating these past couple of years, as we've gone through contract negotiations, a new elementary school, new superintendent search. It's been a hectic two years, but I wouldn't trade the experience for anything. So thank you to all of you, and thank you to the voters of the City of Chicopee for putting your trust in me and getting me on this board and getting me onto the City Council. It means the world to me. And to my successor, Ms. Russo, I'm sure you will do, or Mrs. Russo, I'm sure you will do a tremendous job. And to Mr. Brooks here, it's been a while since we've had a Brooks on the School Committee. I'm sure you will serve just as ably. I have no doubt about that for the both of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jay Doubt.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute and wish a happy holiday season to our staff, our students, all of the residents of Chicopee. I hope everyone enjoys their well-deserved break. And just wanted to acknowledge, again, our two committee members that are moving up and switching sides over to the City Council. You know, I was, I came in midterm and was the new guy, you know, and, you know, you guys both, younger than me, kind of took me under your wing as the new guy and everything, offering words of encouragement and guidance. And so I truly appreciate it. I wish both of you gentlemen luck in your roles, and look forward to continue to work for a better Chicopee with you guys and everyone on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ron Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. What's nice about going last is all your colleagues say all the thoughts you already had in your mind, so that's good, because the public doesn't have to listen to me repeat everything. But great sentiments by all of you, and I would have said a lot of the same thing, so thank you, but nothing else. Have a nice Christmas, everybody, and good holiday season.
Thank you. I do want to take a moment to echo the sentiments that were just shared by my colleagues here on the School Committee. Happy holidays and a happy, healthy, prosperous New Year to all. To the two new City Councilor-elects that'll be joining the new board, I'm looking forward to working with you in that capacity. I think you've both grown over the last couple of years and really proud of your accomplishment, and I'm sure that you're going to do a great job working on the other side, which is the City Council. So best of luck to you. And to the new members that'll be joining us, Sonny, excited to have you aboard, and to Deanna Russo as well. So looking forward to continuing with this fresh, new dynamic under the leadership of our superintendent, and continuing to make Chicopee hopefully the envy of other communities and the Chicopee Public School System, a school district that we can all be very proud of, where you can get a world-class education right here in our city. So from there, I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent for public announcements.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone. On the School Committee, I echo the sentiments that everyone shared. Thank you for bringing me on. It's been a great experience, and I look forward to working with you in a different capacity. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to actually say that, as we enter the holiday season, I just want to acknowledge the hard work that our staff is doing. As I've been going through the schools, whether it's for a holiday gathering, or whether it's a walk-through, or it's just a quick visit and talking with the principal, I just want to acknowledge that there's a lot of loss going on in our staff's families, students included. And I just think the holidays is one of those times where it hits home even more so. So I just want to tell our staff, students, and everyone in between who works for the Chicopee Public School System, we see you, we care for you, we'll be there for you. So I just hope that the holiday season will be all that it's intended to be for you. And then, when we come into the new year 2024, we will have your back. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have public input. Public input is limited to 30 minutes, or three to five minutes per participant. First up, please state your name and address for the record. We have Lisa Beveneau. Welcome, Lisa.
Lisa Beveneau, 34 Everett Street. Congratulations, Mr. Shamsky, Mr. Wagner. Good for you. Last night, I spoke at the City Council meeting because I was thrilled to see that the City of Chicopee has been awarded a grant through the Safe Streets for All program to develop a plan related to complete streets and supplemental. So that's a win for the city. That's for the safety of our streets. I was also thrilled to see, which is why I'm here tonight, and the gentleman who's going to speak after me, who has a problem with a bus stop. But because I've been concerned, and I've been concerned for a long time, because I think the mayor knows that I don't like any of the fatalities on the streets, neither does he or anyone else here. And I think it was alarming about the two students from the middle school, the incidents that have happened. And Dr. Ware, you're fantastic in reaching out to the community and letting us know what's happening, the appropriate amount of information to let us know. So I was glad to see that the city is participating in the safe routes to school. And I want to compliment the city, because we've been awarded money for the Stryber Elementary School improvements. This is a project with construction to begin in spring of 2025, to install new sidewalks and replace existing sidewalks, as well improve sidewalks. That will improve connectivity to Stryber School from Irene Court and a portion of Irene Streets, Stryber Drive from Memorial Drive to the school, Telegraph Avenue from Prospect to the school, along Chicopee Housing Authority from Deborah Drive to Stryber Drive and along the front of the school. And, you know, this is, this project is over $1 million, you know. So that's fantastic that we're getting funding for this. I happened to stumble upon it. I think it's great. I think this is the kind of information that needs to get out into the city more, and we need to promote this. And I guess I also was wondering how, I know I've heard the principal at Stefanic School talk about the walking school bus, which is part of the safe routes to school, and I've heard it mentioned from others. But I guess my question is, how collectively is that being done through the city? Is there a repository that someone, someone is spearheading it? Because these are projects that are combined with the expertise of the DPW, and it's not just educators, you know. You get the problems or the issues that may come in. And the other thing that I thought of is that there's a guide through that safe routes to school of pop-up projects, which was updated, I believe, in October of 2022, so it's fairly current. And these pop-up projects are temporary actions that can be taken to highlight what may be areas where there are problems, or where you highlight changing traffic flow that aren't big dollar value improvements. And they have examples of there, whether it was done with paints or cones or whatever. And there's community involvement. And, and I really like this also, because it's been said for a long time, we need to get the community back involved in what's happening here, whether it's at city level or at the school level. And I know Dr. Ware is really reaching out to the, to the community with the meetings and stuff he's having, and I think that's absolutely fantastic. And I saw these pop-up projects as maybe a way to address it, too. And honestly, I thought of the wave, the waves from downtown Chicopee. And I said, you know, it didn't work downtown. Everybody was a little revved up about it. But could those be used in a temporary way to create lanes at Bellamy School to highlight the traffic flow because of the issues that have happened there in the past month? And I just think if we all worked collectively as a city, we never know what kind of ideas may come out. So I just want to thank you all, and I wanted to highlight that money that's going for Stryber School, because I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public input, we have Keith Mailhut. Welcome, Keith.
First of all, I could thank you very much, School Committee, for letting me speak tonight, and I wish you all happy holidays. Yesterday, I went to a meeting with the City Council in regards to safety issues, in regards to, not the children, but to us. But tonight, I'm here to talk about safety issues with the children going to school. New Ludlow Road, this is mainly in regards to New Ludlow Road. Not only New Ludlow Road, but I'm sure there's other streets. Very heavily trafficked area. Equipment, trucks, the industries that have been built up in South Hadley has tripled over the years. The last time the city evaluated the flow of traffic was in 1985. The speed limit has never been changed since then. We're in the 21st century. Children have to cross that road. Pedestrians have to cross that road. My grandchildren have had to cross that road for over five years now with me or by themselves now, at 7:00 in the morning, to be able to catch the bus. They put sidewalks on one side of the street, which is the south stride of New Ludlow Road. North side has no sidewalks whatsoever. So anybody, whether it be a child, whether it be a parent, elderly, we have to cross that road to get to being safe to a sidewalk. What is the issue that nothing is being done with sidewalks? Safety. Safety is the main thing for our children. Do we not call school off because of bad weather? Do we not call school off because of winds or temperatures? School, the snow. Our kids on this side have to turn around and walk on the side of the street. No sidewalk. Where the buses turn, to be able to get the bus, walk in the street, or walk in the person's yard to make them be able to get the bus. This is ridiculous. What happens if a child got off that bus, there's no sidewalk, and slipped underneath that bus? When is enough enough? We've had how many pedestrian accidents this year? Other areas are taking care of it. Why is something not being, this is a main traffic area. The commercial vehicles, it's unbelievable. I've had committee up there looking the area. It's unbelievable. The speed limits that they're going. You can turn around and have, and, 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 and put all the speed limits you want, all the lights that you want. If it is not enforced, it's no good. It's not enforced. There's no police on there looking to see who is speeding. Look in the history and see how many tickets were given out on that street. 90% of them were given out, taken right and left on 33 onto New Ludlow Road, because they changed the speed. It ain't going down the street screaming, "I almost got hit on my side street" the other night. Somebody came off the main drag, New Ludlow Road. It's a throughway. Goes from Chicopee into South Hadley. Nighttime. Guys flying through there. Really? Give me a break. I'm in my 70s, walking across the road, and hears it. Okay, I'm not going to say it was a child or a young kid or what. I don't want to push it. I says, "Really?" And I jumped out of the way. He no sooner jumped out of the way, and he floored it again. But that's a throughway. Okay, you see what's happening down a side street? Never mind a main drag. This is ridiculous for a child to have to go across the street at 7:00 in the morning. And, no, don't get me wrong, issues are changing. They have been in the works. So, but it's taken me, right now, five years, five years to get this stuff and start to work with the bus company to be able to, okay, we got them right now to come back and pick them up on this side of the street, the north side, where they have to cross to the south side. Why can't they come down the rest of Lombard Street? Oh, it's, part of the street is South Hadley. Oh, wait a minute. Do I pay my taxes? Do these people pay their taxes? But because it's South Hadley, part of it, which is one quarter of the street, we don't want to turn around and go into South Hadley, take a left, take another left, oh, excuse me, go straight across, pick the child up, go down to the end of the street, take a left, take another left, pick the other people up on that side of the street. And I did-
Keith, I'm sorry, you're over your limit, but if you want to just finish up those last couple of thoughts and-
Right. I did- I did what my vehicle, how long it would actually take for me to do the circle. Two minutes. They are actually rerouting theirself, re-tracking, and it's taken them more time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. No visitors, approval of minutes, 23-12-9.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the School Committee held in August 2023 be approved.
Vice Chair?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Reports 23-12-10.
Report on personnel action taken. I'd like to call Ms. Deb Green up to the podium for an update.
Good evening, everyone. This is, your report is from November 30th through December 13th. We had a total of eight new hires, three resignations. Of those new hires, three of them were teachers, members of Unit A, zero paraprofessionals this time. But there were also two retirements in there that I believe Dr. Ware has something for. And then just to update you on our postings, we are still in the process of auditing those postings, so they are down to 57, getting ready to turn over to Power School for our postings. Twenty-seven of those are in Unit A, 16 of those are Unit E, and of those positions, 21 of them are special ed positions. And those two retirements were Maureen Tim Taravella and Laura Allen. That Dr. Ware has something on.
All right. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I'll start with Ms. Laura Allen. 26 years of service and currently employed at our Chicagabe Academy at, I mean, excuse me, at Seltzer School. So Laura Allen has worked for the Chicagabe Public Schools for 26 years as a paraprofessional. She finishes her career at Chicagabe Academy in a substantially separate classroom. She has brought creativity to our school environment with her crafty skills and artistic talents. She cares deeply for our students and often brings in treats to share. When we asked our students what they will miss about Ms. Allen, they said, "Her snacks are great. She helps us a lot with our work and is a caring person." Next, I'd like to read for Ms. Maureen Tim Taravella. For the past 21 years, Ms. Tim Taravella has been an integral part of the Chicagabe Public Schools. Her passion for teaching and willingness to take on innovative initiatives has provided students with top-notch learning experiences while also supporting fellow colleagues. Ms. Tim Taravella's dedication throughout the years to the students and staff have been unwavering. Bellamy will miss Tim Taravella's outgoing personality and bright smile. We wish her nothing but the best in her future endeavors and many happy times with her family and friends. And I would like to echo the sentiments to Ms. Allen and Ms. Tim Taravella. We thank you for your service. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sandra Parrott.
Just to let the viewing public know that there were a few conferences that staff attended. There were, the Director of Special Ed went to, at a District Administration Leadership Leadership Summit, a little tongue twister there, in Naples, Florida. And then the Supervisor of Nurses attended in early December, Leading for Equity in School Health Session. This was a Zoom meeting. And then a Content Specialist attended the DESI Literacy Leaders Network in Devens, Massachusetts. And then a Substance Abuse Specialist in December attended the I Decide in Somerville, which is Drug Education Curriculum Education Diversion Empowerment, the hope that, to increase skills for behavioral support for our middle and high school students. It's a secondary prevention program for perhaps at-risk students and to teach them goals to empower them to engage in healthy decisions. So it sounds like it's an exciting education for our leaders in our school system.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to New Business, 23-12-11.
Move that the bills warrant S. 120823 totaling $816,747.08 be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Sam, would you like to read the warrants into the official record?
Yes, sir. So I will read the totals of both warrants and we will act upon each individually. John, thank you for everything you do. For athletics, we have, for athletics, $20,678. Food services, $162,256. General expenses, $113,160. Grants, $159,360. Maintenance, $102,995. Special education, $677,451. Transportation, $183,000. Telecommunications, $31,926. Sales tax, $726. Reimbursements, $307 for a grand total of $1,449,051.
Thank you. Just for clarity, we'll be voting on the first warrant, that's S. 120823, for $816,747.08. Any comments? Take a roll call, please.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield? Mr. Shamsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Abstain.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
10 yes, one abstain.
Motion carries, 23-12-12.
Move that the bills warrant S. 121523 totaling $632,304.08 be approved.
Bray Schofield, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Any discussion? Sure. Vice Chair, Susan Zatella.
If I can just make mention of a few of the items that we're approving of this evening. Well, many of them are Amazon warrants for recess toys, office cabinets, $199 for our cosmetology budget, art supplies, classroom supplies. We had a $500 monthly payment to our school physician, a $2,900 payment for playground inspection and maintenance purposes, $1,859 for glass repair replacement, and I'd like to also mention $1,925 for produce for our schools from a really hard-working Chicagabe farming family.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shamsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
11 yes.
Motion carries, 23-12-13.
Move that the School Committee dissolve the Curriculum Subcommittee and inform the following subcommittees no later than the third School Committee meeting in 2024. Finance Subcommittee, Facility Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee, and Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee.
Sam, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I would like a motion to postpone this, if by any chance, if that's possible to the next meeting, because I just received information in regards to this Curriculum Subcommittee that I would like to think about. Well, I won't be here for the next meeting, but.
So others can think about it.
Yeah, so that others can think about, because I thought it was pretty informative and enlightening. So I'd like to postpone.
So we have a motion to postpone to the first meeting in January?
Yes.
Don, on that motion?
Well, I was going to ask a question. Is there anything that you would like us to think about, seeing you won't be at the next meeting?
Yeah, I saw a list from Vice Chair Sue Lopes in regards to the stuff in the past that we've done in regards to, for example, the REACH Program, keeping that, and HVAC and plumbing, all that stuff that was discussed. I think that should be looked at a little further. I don't recall that being talked about in the last policy, or was it Policy Subcommittee that we discussed? Yeah, curriculum.
Curriculum.
So, no, I meant like the meeting that we discussed this actual, moving this to the full committee. So I just think that other members of the committee could have, if they had access to that information, it'd be helpful and useful.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Tim Wagner.
Yeah, so this is something that we discussed a little bit at length in the Policy Subcommittee. The issue that we have with the Curriculum Subcommittee is that the School Committee, legally speaking, aside from approving a program of studies before an upcoming school year, we have no curriculum authority. So that Subcommittee, we, you know, can't really do very much. It can discuss things, but it can't really, you know, take any action on it, seeing as how the curriculum is not in the hands of the School Committee, that's in the hands of the professionals that we hire to manage the district. If you look at other school districts, there's really not curriculum subcommittees that meet. The two big ones are Finance Subcommittees and Policy Subcommittees. So, you know, just in regards to procedurally what is correct as a school district, this is the way that we, you know, decided to go, this is what the Policy Subcommittee recommends. So I just want to put, you know, give a little bit of context to it there as well.
Thank you. So we have a motion to postpone. Vice Chair?
Thank you. We don't have oversight on our facilities either, and we have a Facility Subcommittee that Subcommittee that's been in existence as long as our Curriculum Subcommittee. It's, I'm in the opinion that it's the most important function of a school system is the curriculum. We have a state mandated core, but School Committees still can play a role in making decisions for the curriculum that we teach our students. I've been a part of accomplishing much-needed work the past 25 years as being a member, an active member of the Curriculum Subcommittee. We've looked at the curriculum that deals with issues with sex ed classes and the opt-out process that parents have the opportunity to take if they don't want their students to take certain classes. Again, Sam Shamsky mentioned the Heating and Plumbing Program, the HV Program, they were introduced, they were talked about in the Curriculum Subcommittee at length, I remember very vividly. We also introduced math in the middle schools that was separated for our male and female students, our boys and our girls, and we discussed that at length in the Curriculum Subcommittee. We also, we brought in specialists, we brought in certain teachers, we brought in our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. We looked at curriculum, looked at the preschools, at CHS, Chicagabe High School, as a Career Tech Program. Curriculum would evaluate books and changes in materials, and we were always very respectful at the same time that we left it up to our district, our teachers and our Assistant Superintendent to pick out our books. We never overstepped our boundaries. We always did good, valid work in the Curriculum Subcommittee. I experienced that myself, and I'm sure the others, over the years, experienced the same thing, that were a part of it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion to postpone. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? We have all in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to 23-11-14.
Update on Bowie School Playground and Review ADA Compliance Regarding the Playgrounds on School Property requested by Ms. Sandra Parrott.
Sandra Parrott.
I just asked that we bring this out for public discussion because there had originally been a meeting of the Education Subcommittee of the City Council with some members of the School Committee attending, and there was discussion about the playground at Bowie School. And then there was some correspondence that came to the School Department regarding the ADA compliance of the playground and that there might be fines imposed on the, on the city for non-compliance for accessibility. So I just thought it would be a good idea to have an open discussion about the status of the playground equipment at Bowie School.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to our Superintendent, who's prepared to give us an update and overview of what's happening at Bowie School's playground.
Thank you, Ms. Parrott. And so, yes, the update is, actually, I think it's important for the public to know the, some of the history that you're speaking to, and so that we can definitely be very transparent about what's going on. So the Bowie Playground actually has, there have been many constituents reaching out saying about, they were wondering about the safety and the actual quality of the playground. We have acknowledged that the playground exceeds probably the 20-year-old mark. I know Mr. Chapdeline, and I have had numerous conversations about that. And so one, as we started getting those, those concerns, we actually did work with a vendor named CMJ Construction that actually came out and started doing inspections of our playgrounds, so we can actually reassure the public that we, of course, we clear, we take safety and security of our playgrounds very seriously as well. And so we just actually received the report. Mr. Chapdeline sent it over and we're analyzing it, and in that report, there's nothing that is concerning as far as unsafe or need to be shutting down of our playgrounds. There is clear recommendations that they get to make. So some of their purview was checking to make sure the bolts are tight, minor fixes that can be completed at the time of a tune-up, checking for safety and safety concerns. For an example, damage or worn pieces, safety zone infringement, appropriate safety surface worn chains, and then they give you a subject report of the inspections in which they do. So I know in the past, Chicagabe has participated in doing inspections, so Mr. Chapdeline and I had a conversation about restarting those so that we can actually give the report to the public. So the report is just completed, and I will have that as part as the Subcommittee Facilities update, as well as bring it to the full committee so that everyone knows that. But I just want to reassure the public, I'm preliminary, I've read the report, and there's, and not that there's not work we can do, but there's nothing in disrepair except for the slide. So one of the things that the constituents have reached out about is about some of the pieces of the playground, and more particularly, the slide that had a hole in it. So the slide was ordered, the slide was delivered, and the slide was missing parts. So unfortunately, in my update to the School Committee, which I just sent yesterday, the slide, there were extra, the correct parts were shipped in. I spoke with Mr. Chapdeline today in that he needs to verify the parts that were sent over to the city. Once he's done so, we will provide another update to the community. However, the installation of the rubber mat that is needed to reach ADA compliance has been installed. It was, it began last week, last Thursday, to be very specific, and then worked, was, work bled into the weekend. And as you know, we had a serious storm on Monday, so we actually just wrapped up at the close of the day yesterday. So the map is, the mat, the rubber mat is in place. The communication has gone back to the state, which is the Compliance Office for the State of Massachusetts around ADA compliance, as well as Stevens Sekowski, who is our ADA Compliance Officer for the city, has also been made aware. So the next step is really just getting back to that slide and making sure that when it is fixed and when the parts are in, that it is updated so that our kids can have a safe slide to play with. But I just want to reassure the public that a lot of what doesn't come to the light does happen behind scenes. And so that in the Subcommittee that just started back up this last week, I believe, we met as a Facility Subcommittee, but I also, if you recall about back in October, I had Mr. Chapdeline come and speak for an update. I plan on continuing that because, again, I would like to show that I am being very transparent about any of the concerns constituents have so that we can actually put some concerns to rest.
Sure, Don first.
I got two things. Number one, we got an email from a constituent, which I'm sure he's been forward to, and the concern is that the mat don't meet ADA compliance. The question is, if it does it, is that what was recommended?
That is what was recommended, yeah, correct. And the gentleman from the state actually had a conversation with Mr. Chapdeline about that does meet compliance.
I wanted to make sure that was made public.
100%. There was a process to it, so I know there was part of that email, it was about the actual wood chips as well and how they're leveled out and things of that nature. But what I will say is, when we turn over to our vendor, we are, we're trying to trust the fact that not only have they completed this work before, but when we got the green light from the state to say this is something that is commonly done, we just went ahead and did it.
Any other thing for transparency? Can we, do we have a ballpark price tag that we had to do to bring this playground into compliance?
So yes, there's a couple of price tags. So one of them, the inspection was over, I think Ms. Zatella Lopes read it into record, it was over $2,900 for the inspection alone, and then the actual rubber matting, as well as the slide, I believe was 47, correct, Mr. Chapdeline? And if you want to come up, you can. I just recalling from memory, but it was about 47.
7K.
Yeah, for, yes, 47,000, yes.
It's not that we've taken this lightly.
No, 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 correct, correct.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Yes, the slide, the ADA matting is $49,636.48. And. And the slide and installation's around seven grand, which is going to be done when the parts come in. The only other thing that Dr. Ware and I didn't get a chance to talk about, I've been working on looking through all of our playgrounds that we have through the district, and of course, Bowie School is our oldest playground, which was installed around nineteen ninety-eight. And, you know, although ADA's been around since the nineties, the early nineties, they really didn't branch out to playgrounds till later in their, in their time. So if you look, like, they changed in two thousand and four, they changed some of the playground laws, and then in, I think, two thousand and ten. So, looking at all of our playgrounds that are installed, a lot of them are set up where Bowie doesn't have that, where there's a transition area. So mainly, you have rubber matting that goes to a transition area where the handicap person can be placed on the playground at that transition area. The reason Bowie was so much is there is no transition area. Every, every device had to have a rubber mat that goes to it. So some of our other playgrounds that were put in, if I look through the paperwork, we did have someone like a, a landscape engineer who specializes in ADA compliances, and they wrote up a program that said, yes, this, this part of the playground is where the ADA access is, and this is how, how, you know, we maintain that area to keep, keep it accessible. I think we're, with the way the laws has changed, and this is what I was going to talk to Dr. Ware about when we get a chance, is I think we should hire a landscape architect who specializes in ADA compliance for playgrounds to go around to our nine, well, that, we already did, we already did Bowie, so our other eight playgrounds at the schools, and do a study on what it will take to make them all ADA compliant.
Sure, Sandra Perret.
There, there's a lot to the playgrounds in our school system, and our, our job is education. So I'm wondering if the playgrounds of the school system should come under the overall Parks and Recs Department, and would come under the Superintendent of the Parks and Ms. Batista, who oversees the DPW, because that's their main job, is the Parks Department. These are mini parks, and you have so much in terms of the custodial aspect and maintaining our buildings, that because of all the regulations that are out there with regards to playground accessibility, should this not be something that we consider, moving this, the playgrounds to Parks and Rec? Just a thought.
Thank you.
Because of the expertise that those individuals have with regards to that.
Any other comments? Sure, Susan?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on...
Susan?
No, it's okay.
Go ahead, Don.
I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Perret said. If you look, there are several other parks in the city, one of them being down in Willimansett, Nash Field, that's got wood chips and is not, not handicap compliant. So my question would be, should the Parks Department join this issue to find out where the rest of the parks fall to?
All my, just a point of reference, yes, those are my notes. I'm going to make sure that, and Scott collaborating and working with you, to make sure that if we already have a, a design architect that, or landscape architect that we work with, I know that we've just done Rivers Park over, we're looking at a comprehensive approach to ZOT, and there's been some other upgrades throughout our parks. Here, we have thirty of them, and making sure that they're all in compliance. So I'm going to check with DPW and check with our Superintendent of Parks. I think it's a great idea. We can collaborate and work together. I think we have to look at also the legality of city and municipal property on the municipal side, in our municipal parks versus the actual school grounds, and see if we can work out something where we can collaborate and work together. So I have notes to make sure that our parks are, are up to code, and making sure we can do that immediately. If not, it's already done. I haven't researched that, and I'm hopeful that those are answers I can have for you at the next meeting, if you'd like.
Just with regards to the accessibility, are, and we do want the children of the city to be able to access our parks and playgrounds and school playgrounds. This is a major project to do. But are we not somewhat grandfathered in unless there's a new playground under construction, or there's a remodeling of the park itself?
I can answer that. With some of the ADA compliance, I've been researching, there is no grandfather. For ADA compliance, there are no grandfather, and I'm sure Stephen can back me up on that. It, it doesn't work that way.
Well, and just again, a point of information, our ADA Compliance Officer is here as well, and we'll work in tandem together and collaborate, and, and make sure that we're doing everything in our power to make sure that our parks are accessible, ADA compliant, and up to code. I, I know that Stephen is new, and he's wearing that hat as well. And I'm not going to put you on the spot to ask if you've had conversations about our parks unless you want to share it. I have not had those conversations. I wasn't prepared for these questions tonight, to have answers for you, because I didn't know what your questions were, but I can get those answers for you.
And as we're building a new school, that we might want to include Mr. Zehowski as well in, on the committee because of the ADA compliance regulations, and to be sure that we are accessible and inclusive for our new school playground.
Yes, I've had the opportunity to tour two schools, and I'll just say the one in West Springfield, I, I forgot the name of it off the top of my head, but they have incorporated two different playground, playscapes into their new school, elementary school on Main Street, I believe, right off of Main Street, and Colburn?
Colburn.
Colburn School, thank you.
And there's a...
And also East Hampton as well has athletic fields. I'm not sure about playscapes, but I think ideally we have challenges ahead as we look to convert, potentially converting parkland into school, school land is going to be a challenge that involves our local delegation. But we're not at that point yet. We're very, very close as we go into, we went in, I'm sorry, from eligibility now into feasibility starts in January. So that's when we start looking at what feasible options we have in front of us as we go forward with the new school. And I'm sure, I know as, as mayor and chairman of the school committee, I'm hopeful that as part of the comprehensive new plan, there's going to be state-of-the-art playscapes that are going to be ADA compliant. And obviously, we have a lot of opportunity to look at spec schools, to look at local projects that have been done right here in Western Mass, Central Mass, and throughout the Commonwealth. So our goal is to make sure that we put in something that's very special, that these kids can enjoy, especially during recess and after and before and after school, and safe, obviously. Yeah, sure.
And there are some exciting pieces of equipment out there. I had a conversation with Mr. Zehowski about what is available, and he shared a playground from a state that he previously worked at in, in Texas. And it's just exciting what's available for, for students, for kiddos. So that's wonderful. Just stepping back to Bowie School, I did receive an email today from someone who was not able to attend the meeting, and I had shared with her that she could call in and Zoom. I didn't have that number available, but I don't believe that, didn't look like anybody called into Zoom. But the woman mentioned about, which you shared tonight, about ordering of parts for the slide, that it was not complete. And then she mentioned that last week, the black rubber mats were added, but not in all areas of the playground floors, and that it appeared that the effort was made to level the mulch, but the rubber surface was wavy and uneven, which could pose a hazard for children running. And she questioned if this was a temporary solution, and the change may promote mobility for assistive devices like a wheelchair, but the holes in the surface may pose a hazard for someone who is using a walker or a visual cane or stick, that it might get caught in the hole of the mats. This was something that came to mind when she saw that, so I don't know if that, anything happened with that, with the mats, in terms of the leveling of the mats?
Well, all I could say is, you know, it was done before the rain. So maybe after the rain, it settled a little, because they, what they do is they level the wood chips, the wood chips before they put the rubber down. So maybe after they leveled it, it settled. I can ask them to come back and look at it and see if there's anything they can do. I, you know, had pictures, and I didn't see that in the pictures when they were taken on Tuesday, but I can look, I can look at it. And the, you know, canes and walkers, I'll have to check with the company, because this is what was recommended ADA, to make it ADA compliant.
Okay. Thank you. It was just an observation that someone had made, so thank you for answering that, that issue that she raised.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Susan?
I thank Sarah for her email that she sent to all of us. And I noticed it was dated December nineteenth, and today's the twentieth, and the superintendent mentioned that there was some work done there today to probably correct those errors or mistake, or oversights and...
I think that's part of what Mr. Chapdeline was talking about, because even the pictures that I submitted to the school committee, it doesn't appear that way. However, I think that, you know what, maybe a reinspection is in order because of the fact that we had such a significant storm over the weekend. So we'll definitely have the company, I'll let Mr. Chapdeline run point on that and actually follow up.
Yeah, again, I thank Sarah for her email, very comprehensive, very well-written. And I like the sentence that she wrote, "The new wooden posts around the perimeter of the playground look great," with an exclamation point. Thank you, Mr. Chapdeline.
You're welcome.
Thank you for working on the playground outlet with school, too. That's named after Mr. James Stefanic in the front of the building. It's used by a lot of people.
Thank you. Tim Wagner?
Last thing, it's not really a question for, for Scott, or for the superintendent, or for the mayor. You know, this, this issue takes us back a couple of months now, and I sort of regret that it wasn't first handled at the, at the school committee level. You know, this is, this is what we're here for as an elected body, you know. If you have any concerns, please do reach out to us, because for those of us that, you know, are familiar with this, it was first handled in a City Council Subcommittee, you know, which, which I don't really think it ever should have been there, but, you know, that's what we're here for. So one of, that's one of the things we have a public email for, public contact information. If you see something, please, you know, I know we're not as well-known as the City Council, but please do reach out to us, you know. It's part of what we do. It's what we like doing, it's why we do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just, I'm reminiscing, and we've come a long way from the spider at Stefanic School in the seventies when I went there, so it was a...
Over the asphalt.
Five feet off the ground, over asphalt, right. Sure. Susan, a second time.
These four pictures, I just saw them, they're incredible, of the finished result. They look near-perfect to me. Wow, what a great playground. I hope the same for our new Berry School.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ron Bernard?
I just want to thank Mr. Chapdeline and Dr. Ware for, I know this has been an issue for a little while, the Bowie Playground, and like I said before, it's dear to my heart, because I was a part of the person, just remember back in the day when we built that.
Feel the dreams.
And it's nice to see those new posts up, because I remember taking the auger and drilling the holes and putting the old posts in back twenty-something years ago. So it was nice to see that. And I, and I was there today that Mr. Chapdeline, the guy, the inspector came, and I walked around playground with him and Mr. Burgess, and he's making his list and stuff. So it was kind of neat to experience that. And I went up there today after Dr. Ware sent out the pictures to go check it out again, so. I know kind of a little bit with that, with our constituent was concerned about, about the little waves and stuff. You know, and it has a lot to do with the weather. And as the thing starts settling down, it'll flatten out a little. You walk on it, there's a few little waves here and there, but that's going to be natural when you're sitting on top of wood chips. It's not going to be perfect, perfect, perfect. I guess that's all the comments I'm going to have for that. Thank you again for doing what you're doing.
I want to echo this out of bits of Ron. Scott, thank you, Facilities Director. I know you have your hands full with, I believe you have fifteen buildings under your jurisdiction, playgrounds...
Fifteen schools.
Fifteen schools, and how many buildings?
Seventeen buildings.
Seventeen buildings. So thank you for all you do. Keep our schools safe, and, and you have a fantastic team that's on top of their game, so thank you. And sometimes it is supply chain issues that delay things, like getting parts for a slide. As much as we'd like to get them in a more timely fashion, sometimes they just don't come. So I remember waiting, especially after post-COVID, years, over a year for certain pieces of hardware, and it's nice to see things coming back to normalcy and, and where they're able to rectify a situation where they sent you the wrong hardware. Hopefully, we have the right hardware, and we'll find out tomorrow, I assume, whether or not we can
Absolutely.
fix this slide. So thank you, everyone. Any other comments? Sandra Perret?
Just, you know, again, thank you for coming this evening, and Mr. Zehowski as well, to be able to answer any of our questions, and I guess it's a good idea to, you know, let the public know sooner than later on, on the status if it's taken so long to, for anything to get repaired, so that, you know, people aren't, aren't wondering what's happening. So communication is important, and I know that we're all striving to improve that communication here in our, in our school system. So I think we're on the right track, and certainly, again, welcome, you know, anybody and everybody to, to bring forth any concerns that they have, because we want this to be a, a good education, educational system for our children, as well as to help them spend their recreation time safely as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I was hoping to get it from one of our...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Can I second it ceremonially?
And ceremonially second.
Then we survive.
All in favor?
We did it.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and again, happy holidays to you, your families. And happy health.